Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Buck will take the roll.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Putoff?
Here.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
First thing we have tonight is a proclamation for Mr. Hammond's. That's you. Tim has been a longtime employee of the Evendale, dedicated employee, most effective employee. And he was decided to retire. And so tonight we have a proclamation for him on his behalf. And I'm going to read that proclamation in. Whereas Tim Hammond has dedicated twenty-nine years of service to the Evendale Service Department, having been hired on February second, nineteen ninety-six. As the Service Department of Building Maintenance, where it is fired and being hired by the village, Tim began his career as a carpenter in York on a number of commercial residential projects, rising to the role of construction supervisor. Tim has been a resident of the Village of Evendale since nineteen eighty-three along with his wife Debbie, with their three children Tiffany, Lindsay, and Austin. Tim has applied for the position of Service Building Maintenance for a career that provides stability and consistency on a regular schedule. Tim over his career has developed and maintained upgrades and constructed numerous buildings and ground components. His artistry and skill as a carpenter contributed to the completion of many projects that were various departments and are still in use today. Tim has developed a program for creating maintenance, creating maintenance, and running some sound mixing board setups to provide audio functions for a number of built events, including the county meeting, the fireplace seminars, the garden barns event. Tim personally works with personality and work ethic and attitude, providing steadiness to the department, maintaining a smooth operation of the department, and providing and fostering working relationships with residents, vendors, contractors, coworkers, and other departments. Whereas Tim and the family enjoy camping, boating, and riding motorcycles. Tim was retired from the Evendale Service Department on July seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, marking his end of the year. And he has been properly recognized for many years of devotion, care, and time committed to the department and to the Village of Evendale. Now there for Iowa County Mayor and Village of Evendale, and on behalf of the Village Council, twelve employees, residents, residents and residents of the Village, also consider thanks and appreciation and best wishes to Tim Hammond. Best wishes to our people this day, to the family. Thank you very much. That's a pleasure. It's important for the village. I just appreciate it. Thanks. We're going to talk to you next week. I'll swing for your future travels and whatever you do. All right, next we have, we're going to do the ordinance, which is for hiring of two firemen. And this is ordinance twenty-five dash forty-four, and I need permission to read it by title only.
Still move.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-five forty-four, the ordinance appointing Scott McCoy and Dominic King as firefighter medics for the Village of Evendale and declaring it as an emergency. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
Still move. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr.?
Aye.
Patterson.
Patterson.
Mr. Patterson? Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
Still move. Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
Second. Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance forty-four, twenty-five dash forty-four adopted as an emergency. Please rise up and then repeat every minute. I? Do you all swear that I support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America?
Do you all swear that I support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America?
And the State of Ohio?
And the State of Ohio.
And that I will in all respects conserve the provisions of the Charter and the forces of the Village of Evendale?
With all respect, we observe the provisions of the Charter and the forces of the Village of Evendale.
And faithfully discharge the duty of the title of fire and fire net, under the Evendale Fire Charter and the rest of my oath.
And faithfully discharge the duty of the title of fire and fire net, under the Evendale Fire Department and the rest of my oath.
This is my wife Stacy, my oldest daughter Shelby, my son Denver, and my eldest daughter Dana. And my father here Melvin, and my husband Dick.
My wife Shannon, oldest Charlie, and Sally, Henry, and Teddy. And then no one can make it up, and the family can make it nine.
No.
Awesome board. Probably the worst. Just one picture together.
You all are welcome to stay if you want. I say that all the time, nobody ever stays. Nobody ever stays. You're welcome. You're welcome.
No, no, you're good. You're good.
Mayor, I think she's gunning for your chair.
That's what?
I think she's gunning for your chair.
Yeah. The minutes of the previous meeting have been distributed. Any additions, corrections, or changes? If not, may I have a motion to accept?
Still move. Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
The minutes are accepted. We will go to committee reports, and we'll begin with the Finance Committee.
So June of two thousand and twenty-five report, so we total receipts by date are up three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, or approximately three percent of the total approximate eleven point seven million. Village-wide June receipts exceeded expenditures by approximately seven hundred and fifty, fifteen thousand. Year-to-date receipts exceed expenditures by one point four seven million. Couple ordinances that will be on for tonight as well, but we'll get into those later. And but all in our, we had a very strong June and recovering for the year. And then on to recreation. After a cold start of this swim pool, I, pool season, we have totally reversed course, and the pool was up to ninety-two degrees, but it has cooled down over the last week. Evendale was named Swim Safe's Pool of the Month for June, a fun honor for our staff over the pool. We have, we are having an issue with the new sand volleyball poles, but they will be fixed immediately. Save the date for the pool bash coming Friday, August twenty-second. Please mark your calendars for that date. On June twentieth, Phi Lambda Pi celebrated its sixty-sixth annual awards night. Talking about a group being ahead of its time, you know, sixty-six years ago, starting a student organization back then is incredible. Sports tennis courts turned out great and are getting heavy use there, and as well as the pickleball. Swim team is making their way through the summer schedule. They finished their last meet tonight at Norwood, and again, first slappers get their Hershey bars this year. Championships are next Monday and Tuesday. Evendale has become a site for free amputee soccer open field clinic this year. Also, Fun and Sun is having a great summer with over two hundred and sixty campers. Fabulous Friday trips have included trips to Pump It Up, Altitude, Trampoline Park, The Web, and Run Fun, Run Jump and Play. Finished the Funshine, had an Operation Give Back Week where they collected food and perishable items and making dog toys for SPCA. Also, making bracelets for the residents at Saint Joseph Home, all Y collecting school supplies for local schools in need. This year's Summer Pavilion Series has kicked off, and actually, it's almost complete. I think there's two more events left and featuring the original tunes and headlines by none other than Evendale's own Matt Snyder Waters. Madcap puppets brought the magic with their whimsical performance of fantastic fairy tales, delighted campers and kids across the village. Up next will be Gee, Your Band Smells Terrific on July nineteenth and Forever Diamond on July twenty-sixth. Let's see, what else? We have Phi Lambda Pi, just the numbers have been very strong this year, and we have a small group graduating this year at awards night, which was held on July twentieth. Summer programs are, been extremely busy. Swim team had one hundred and ninety-seven swimmers, and I'm not sure how many are in championships this year, but all moving forward. Did some repairs throughout the village with not only the amphitheater and the pool, and also pickleball courts as well. And then moving on to Gorman Heritage Farm, playscapes this year, ribbon cutting, mark your calendars, August first, from twelve to twelve-thirty is ribbon cutting for the new playscape. And then also August second, nine o'clock to three P M, celebrate Get Outside and Play Day at Heritage Farm, free emissions to explore, imagine, and enjoy the new playscape as part of the National Play Outside Day. We have two billy, baby goats officially have names, Sonny, Blue Eyes, and Poppy has the Brown Eyes. Campus in full swing, we're halfway through. Princeton City Schools will be returning for local history field trips in the fall. Farm to Community is continuing to grow with, as we visit festivals and summer events and public programming, July Dino Buddies at the farm for chicken and two dinosaur programs. And animals are healthy despite the heat. Flower production is up this year. Structure, architecture reclaiming is currently working to repair the banks and the alfalfa barn. We had twenty groups volunteer year-to-date, nine more scheduled at this ti, nine more scheduled at this time than last year. Servo Ohio Day is held July, June was held July seventeenth, we had over twenty volunteers working the farm. So far, three hundred, three thousand four hundred and sixty-eight individual volunteer hours this year, fifty-seven new volunteers year-to-date, two college summer interns, one from Ohio State and one from Georgetown. Face of Species still a problem, also Eagle Scouts have three projects that are now complete, Arbor Swing and the Playscape Bridge for Toss of Wildflower Sanctuary and Portable Washing Station in the Market Garden. And then on to the Service Department. Vehicle name, vehicles at this time, only one truck remains inoperable and is at Henderson for repair. The building, building maintenance will receive over sixty, building maintenance, we received over sixty resumes, applications for this position, and have narrowed it down, and will settle up on the interviews after July fourth. We have received applications from Grant Carmody and Dylan Palmer for summer seasonal hire, which we approved that ordinance last year, our last month. And Fire Department Generator, the contractor is scheduled for last Monday, and tree removal crews will begin on all the marked trees that you see throughout the village. Seventy-fifth anniversary project is, committee has met with the architects projects and will present a scaled-down version of the project. So, and storage bins are pretty much complete, backfilling process is done, the salt bin roof repair is, we received the quotes for the replacement of the shingles of the salt dome, and then scheduling that work. And Baxter Park Path, the railing has been installed and restoration, and backfilling is complete, and administration recaulking the windows of this building and masonry expansion joints are complete. Elevator, the Cultural Arts Center elevator project is still progressing well, and still are waiting for final dates on the bridge on Glendale-Milford Road, and for complete, to schedule that. And then working on Arrow Hub South Extension with Bear Becker, and then Recreation Center Phase Three, we're still waiting for final documentation from the architect. And the traffic single grants, we have finalized ODOT's agreement with engineering has begun design with this project. And Park Hills entry sign is complete, and paving will happen during the repaving season when we have, when we start those.
Any questions, amendments, changes?
Just a quick question on that last, you might know, James, is that why the cones are still there, they're waiting for the pavement?
Yeah, when they did the restoration, they removed that island, they used material called flash fill. And with the rains that we had for the race, we asked, it kind of leaves a grid on the surface, and I was afraid some of the runners might slip on that, so that was what was left there. But yeah, that'll be milled, and pavement will broad from where we left off all the way out to Glendale-Milford.
So those cones will stay there until we do the paving?
Just for right now, yes. Yeah.
James, while you're there, can you just give us a quick update on, is the engineering, the reengineering on the, on the elevator there yet, or how?
We're still progressing with the elevator shaft, there's still some details that need to be worked out on how that beam will be supported once it's, the portions of it are removed. And so it's still allowing us to work in the shaft itself, this is really on the face coming into the lobby, so it's not really holding this up at this point, but it's, the engineers are working through that with the elevator company right now, so.
Any other discussion? Fire and police?
Okay. Well, fire had a couple of ordinances for meeting, one of which we've already read, and we welcome again our new firefighters to the department. Also, you will find an ordinance for donation of twenty-eight-year-old cabinets that are no longer needed and wouldn't have any value if we put them on the auction website. Chief also mentioned that in the capital budget, there had been money for compressor purchase, but after cleaning and repairs of the existing one were completed, it decided not needed. He's proposing that we reallocate these funds to put in new vinyl flooring, replacing carpeting that exists in the living area on the non-administrative side, and the committee was in support of that. Moving on to police, the Police Department interviewed two lateral candidates and decided not to pass them on to the hiring committee. So we had discussion as to what the next step was, so chief indicated that we should probably proceed with a full hiring process, that being open to any candidate, whether, you know, they're already an existing police officer, or whether they are new and may need to go through training. And we're projecting to start that sometime in September. So because of the current vacancy, the projected retirements in two thousand and twenty-six, and the length of time it takes to get an officer up to speed, to actually be in the field by themselves, that we'd like to hire two officers in this cycle, in the upcoming cycle. The new police cruisers are in, and one is currently being outfitted. Each one of the cruisers has a brand-new mobile data computer, and Hamilton County and Evendale split the cost for these new computers on a fifty-fifty basis. The twenty-one CP recommendations are complete for Evendale, but the chief is still trying to organize multi-jurisdictional training around mass demonstrations and protests, which is of course difficult to do in the summer because their vacations got scheduled everywhere. But that's still on, on the agenda as a to-do. And then as far as communications update for a question that was raised at our town hall meeting last year, the communication system is operational, and we used it last week for this purpose. At this point, we only have about eight hundred people signed up, and we have a goal of at least twice that much, maybe up to two thousand. And I did note, I didn't know this at the committee meeting, but there was a Q R code and signup information contained in the July newsletter for people to register, to be part of the communication system. Cultural arts, a director provided her monthly report, and she was not able to attend the meeting. The big art party, so we just highlighted a few items, I refer everybody to either her report or to website for upcoming cultural arts activities, but the big art party will be held on Friday, August eighth, I believe, but it's being held at the Bell Tower Arts Pavilion because of construction that's going on in the cultural arts building. The Art Ventures for August is scheduled for August first at Tecumseh and Chillicothe. Registration was still open as of our committee meeting last Tuesday. The June trip to, I'm going to say this wrong probably, Wiggerson Gardens, was postponed and has been rescheduled to August twenty-second. And then there's wine tasting July twelfth at the pool. And the jury photo exhibit, you should pay attention to cultural arts website or announcements as they come out, because the call to photographers should be coming out soon. Moving on to building, planning, and zoning, Planning Commission will be reviewing two landscaping plans, one for the Evendale Church of Crisis, their final site plan, and for the aforementioned discussion about the Park Hills subdivision, their final landscape plan will be reviewed at the July meeting. There's also a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting where Evendale Church of Crisis appealing the decision of an administration, administrative official to deny temporary zoning certificate. Both of these meetings are of course open to the public. That meeting is on, the B C A meeting is on the seventeenth. As far as code enforcement is concerned, there were eleven new code enforcement violations in June. We have seen a slowing of the complaints about high grass issues, given that there's been. been less rain and more heat, so it has slowed the growth rate of, of grass. Evendale Commons has several code enforcement violations. Staff is working with Walmart and acre properties to resolve these and it's requiring a fair amount of time, but it mostly it's due to, or results from deferred maintenance that were, was scheduled for common areas of a complex. And then as far as the building department is concerned, twenty-nine permit applications were received. Eleven permits were issued in June with an estimated construction cost of a little over three hundred and seventeen million dollars with a total revenue of a little over a thousand dollars. Many of these permits were residential, which typically has a lower construction cost and revenue associated with it. And that's our report.
Questions, comments? We had a great Fourth of July celebration and I'd like to thank the Service Department, the Recreation Department, and especially Fine Lambda Pi for everything that they did to make that, that day come off. You may have heard in the newspaper, TV, Blue Ash, our sister city, had an event with their fireworks, which was not pleasant. I understand the Police Department was notified of that, is that correct, chief? And, you know, we have a safety committee that meets. Councilwoman McDaniel and myself meet with the Recreation Department and other people every, what is it, quarter or something like that and talk over our safety precautions. This is certainly a situation we're gonna talk about again in the future and I, I presume the Police Chiefs Association will be considering it as well because it was an unfortunate thing to happen on a great day in the situation. And that's basically all I have. Anything else? Let's go to the ordinances then. Ordinance, first ordinance is twenty-five dash forty-five. I need permission to read it by title only.
Don't move.
Second. Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to hire seasonal employee, employees in the Service Department and declaring it as, as an emergency. This is to hire two service employees, I think I'm correct. I have, need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
And I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
Don't move. Second.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
And now declare ordinance twenty-five dash forty-five adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance twenty-five dash forty-six. I need permission to read it by title only.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
An ordinance approving the additional appropriation in the general fund and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
Don't move.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
And I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
The purpose of this ordinance is to appropriate some additional money to continue the redesign of the Fire Department building. I now declare ordinance twenty-five dash forty-six adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance twenty-five dash forty-seven. I need permission to read it by title only.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
An ordinance, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or the designated to approve an agreement permitting storage cabinets purchased by the village of Evendale to be donated or disposed of as an obsolete, unneeded equipment and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to sus- to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
And I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
And I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
Don't move.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
And now declare ordinance twenty-five dash forty-seven adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance twenty-five dash forty-eight. Need permission to read it by title only.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the payment of amounts due upon certain contracts requiring certification of availability of funds and declaring it as an emergency. This is our proverbial then-and-now ordinance. I need a motion to, to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson? Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
And I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
Don't move.
Second. Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance twenty-five dash forty-eight adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance twenty-five dash forty-nine. I need permission to read it by title only.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
An ordinance approving a transfer from the contingency fund to the Fire Department, of the Fire Department and declaring it as an emergency. This is to take care of the uniforms for our new fire per, fire people. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
Don't move.
Carolyn Smiley Rob- Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
And now declare ordinance twenty-five dash forty-nine adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance twenty-five dash fifty. I need a motion to read it by title only.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
An ordinance approving a transfer within the Fire Department and declaring it as an emergency. We got a grant from Walmart, I believe, and this is to deal with that grant. I now need a motion to suspend the second, second and third reading of the ordinance.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Um, yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley, Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
Don't move. Second.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?